Special meeting for April 23, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Morley.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Approval of the agenda. Before we approve the agenda on there, there's a 6A. I would like that reworded to state motion to enter into a closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection 1H to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by federal and state statute for the purpose of discussing a confidential written legal opinion regarding amendments to the lake level order for Higgins Lake. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call. Yes. Roll call, please. Milburn.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Censor. Yes. Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment, agenda items only. Is there any public comment regarding agenda items? Okay. So, board discussion with the attorney representative, Higgins Lake Lake Level Control We have a motion to enter a closed session pursuant to the MCL 15.268 subsection 1H to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute for the purpose of discussing a confidential written legal opinion regarding amendments to the lake level order for Higgins Lake. Do I have a...
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Morley.
Yes.
Censor. Yes. Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay. So, we have to ask everybody to leave, and when our closed session is done, we'll have you return. Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Green. Charlene Cornell from Higgins Lake. I've heard from several people that they're really missing you not filming this and projecting it out to the public. And the question that we have is, we know that some of the townships are filming their meetings and sharing them with the public, so hopefully you guys could find some way around that, because they are finding a way around it. And I know you all profess to be, and the goal is to be transparent, so hopefully you can work around it like I know for certain Garrish Township. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Question?
Nope. 8:30 still. Or 8:30.
Is this the meeting at 8:00?
No, it was a special meeting held at 8:30. Yep.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just as a reminder, as we've been talking about the videos and the acoustics and stuff, if someone in the audience does need to speak, you will need, just let us, raise your hand so you can come up, because no one on the videos can hear you when you're sitting out there. You need to come up to the microphone, if that helps.
Right.
Thank you. That's okay. I'm just sharing it for everyone to know as we continue to keep that video live.
Any other public comment? Okay, with no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will begin at 10:00 a.m. Work session, April 23, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. First, we have the Houghton Lake Lake Level Control Structure Proposed Operational Manual. Delegated authority, Shepke Consulting, Chase Shepke.
All right. This is a draft. We're still going back and forth with Eagle on a few things. We had a meeting with them yesterday. It was positive, but there's still some extra things they want, so we can just start thumbing through it, talk about it, and you can ask questions as we go through. All right, so contents, we did, so a lot on Higgins, Houghton Lake is going to be kind of trying to foresee in the future, to anticipate rain events. And Under Figures was an example of a forecast of something that I would be working off of to try to anticipate how the rain is going to hit, how to manage the structure, because it, you have to, you have to open things early if there's a rain event, because the water can't get out fast enough. So, we'll go to the introduction. It gives a simple background, so we're on page three, well, page one, but page four in your packet. So, just a simple background, talks about the DADAM versus the 98 to the 29, for those people that get confused about the conversion. You have the Houghton Lake Level Structure, when it was built, how it operates, brings up Part 307, has a little explanation on that, and then it brings up the National Weather Service Three Month Outlook. This is what's been proposed on how to try to anticipate how to manage the structure, is looking at these three-month outlooks. And this is mainly most important in the spring, knowing what's going to happen in the spring. We have an operations manual objective. We have our target lake level curve, and that is kind of what we are going to be shooting for. So, let's, we can go to, if you guys want to go to, it's going to be your second to last page, we can look at the target lake level curve, and then there's some wordage about how that will be attempted to be maintained. So, Figure 2 is your target lake level curve. You have, the idea is to not go all the way down the lake level, because as we learned in the study, if you get a dry year and you go all the way down the, sorry, winter lake level, you can't bring it back up. You can get stuck down there, and then you'd be low all season. So, the idea is to bring it down, hit that median range of three inches below summer legal lake level through the winter. And then, once you get close enough to spring, and you can look at your snow pack, you can look at your three-month outlook for your spring, you decide, hey, do I open up more and let more out with anticipation of a lot of rain like we had this year? Or is it going to be a dry spring, and do I start bringing it up a little bit? And the black line on that is your, that's your target, and the gray is your variation to achieve that target, if that makes sense. As we go up and we hit, so we have January, March, April, and within April and May, we're starting to bring it up, and we want to hit legal lake level sometime in May. And if it's calling for a wet spring, we want it to be a little lower than legal lake level in May, because right now, we're 10 inches above, and it hasn't stopped raining. So, even if we were six inches low, we'd still be four inches above with everything opened. So, we're not, and usually in May, we're only looking at people getting boats delivered, it's not prime boating season. So, we're trying to keep it either at or below during May to anticipate for a rain event that could bump us way up high, or a rain-wind combo. As we go into June and July, that's where we bump up, we do our, you know, extra retention to get us through the summer. And that's the black line there. And then, as we go out through the year, we're not holding that all year, all summer long. If we're able to, we're not. We're slowly bumping it down, because as you get closer to the fall, and you don't get a rain event, you only need less to carry you. You don't need to carry the full amount all summer long. So, it will slowly come down as we near fall. And then, back through the same process. Any questions on that? If we go back to the wordage on the technical guidelines, this allows for and explains so, how to manage it. So, if I was not here tomorrow, someone could look at this and look at the National Weather Service data and know how to manage that. This tells you, if you're seeing this on that, you do this, or you're seeing this, you do this. There's got to be some play for variation and kind of, I hate to say guessing, some guessing of where it's actually going to be and how the lake's going to react in certain events, but this breaks it down by word, how to manage it throughout the year. I don't know, I don't know if it's worth going through the whole thing, but if you have any questions, you can reach out to me, give me a call, I can talk you through any questions on this. The big thing was, the big thing with Eagle was the 31 cubic feet per second, was making sure we're able to maintain that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I ask Chase a question?
Sure.
The rain events we've had this month.
Yeah.
The lake is high, but the court ordered said, because ice went out early, we were supposed to be at summer level prior to these rain events. All the boards were open prior to the rain events, and it demonstrated what happens, and we do not always want to be at summer lake level just because the ice went out.
Yes.
The date of April 15, and ice out, whichever occurs first, needs to be gone, in my opinion.
And it was removed.
Because it removes your ability to control the lake from getting too high by forcing you to be too high to begin with, in those months.
Yeah, so that was the ice out and the April 15, those were both removed.
Springtime is the time when we need to mitigate flooding issues.
Yep.
And unless we get rid of the ice out, April 15 wording, it ties our hands on how we can mitigate.
And when we talked to Eagle, they're like, well, how does the chance for a rain event change versus April, May, June, fall of a large storm event? And it really...
And that changes every year, because it depends on how much frost is in the ground when it happens.
It doesn't really change. What we explained was, is the reason why we're keeping it low and then bringing it up is because you have frost in the ground, so you don't have your, your earth isn't acting like a sponge, soaking up some of that water goes all to the lake. You have, in the spring, you have the ground saturated, so when you have a rain event, the lake takes all of it, because the ground can't take any. Same thing with all the wetlands and swamps around here. They can't retain any water, so it all goes to the lake. So, you have an exacerbated problem in the spring when your cup is already full, and your cup being the swamps, soils, those type of things. And they understood that, that was the reason why. In June, that's why we're trying to keep it up, because now you have a larger evaporation rate with a lower recharge. We can go through, there's environmental guidelines that goes over mainly the 31 cubic feet per second. That will be changing a little bit to meet what Eagle wants that to say. They want some things changed with an additional graph. There's an example of the graph at the back, but that has not been finalized. Then, there's an inclusion. I think one of the most important things is the seasonal precipitation outlook example. This is what we will kind of be going off of, and they update this weekly. And the idea is, you look at, so this is equal chance of rain, doesn't tell you how much rain, it says, it gives you percentages. So, hey, we're going to have, for example, this is an example, so for us in this one, we'd have an equal chance or slightly above chance of rain. So, in the spring, you would want to run a little lower than that three inches, knowing that you're going to get a little more rain than average. And that's how you would, and then as it changes, as they update it, you can see how it changes, and everything will shift on here, and that's how you will manage it, trying to look out more in three months. You're playing, you know, it's not, it's going to rain, it's, hey, there's a 30%, 40% chance that you're going to get more rain. We have the target lake level, and then the last, which was last-minute add that's still to go through Eagle, is this is how to manage the weirs or the gates to maintain the 31 cubic feet per second for Eagle. So, what I wanted, what I asked for was, as operating this structure, I need to know how much do I need to keep open of each gate to give that Eagle what they want? And this breaks it down. So, it tells you the depth of water up against the weir, how to open it to maintain your 31 cubic feet.
I think this is a good plan, especially when we're trying to mitigate flooding in the spring. I mean, even the road commission doesn't go by dates when they put on the frost laws. They go by conditions.
Any questions?
Yep, you're welcome.
Chase, real quick, so will we get a final copy then?
We will get a final copy, so...
So, we can approve it?
Back and forth with Eagle right now. We're hoping to have a final, final copy posted to the public online between the 1st and the 7th of May. Somewhere in there, depending on how fast we can get the back and forth figured out with Eagle. And then, once that's figured out, then it's have to go to you guys to get your final blessing, and then we send out the mailing, it'll be posted so people can view it.
Okay.
And they'll be informed that, where it's at with the mailing.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, from a timing perspective, so if that's going to be posted on the, to the public somewhere in May 1st or 7th, comes to us prior to that before being posted?
Yes.
So, one of our meetings ended earlier than that, is that right?
We'll probably get it in, I'm assuming it probably in email. It'll go, be posted to the public that way if they have it, and then it'll come to the May 14 meeting for approval. Thank you. Two, credit card usage policy, discussion of the whole. Jody had sent out a policy for all of us to take a look at and give any feedback.
Absolutely. So, the county, to kind of give you a little history, we currently have credit cards through Home Depot. We have a credit card through Walmart that is mainly used for prescription purchases for our inmates. We have a FBNO account for a governmental entity that has a credit limit, total credit limit of $50,000. We have specific individuals who have been assigned cards for that. That being said, nobody has a credit limit of 50,000. The max credit limit is 10,000, and that actually runs for the Sheriff's Department, because they do the largest bulk of attendance as far as going towards any conferences and things, and we have had issues through the years with those being done. That being said, we have a credit card policy that actually doesn't say anything. So, when Commissioner Censor came to me on Thursday and said she would like to have the credit card policy on there, and our vice chair then asked if I could draft something up, what I put together is a combination of the actual statute, Public Act 266 of 1995 that provisions governing bodies in regards to credit card agreements and the current practices that we have in the county. So, as you go through this, obviously, the policy is setting that standard down in paper, very similar to some of the other policies that we've already been working on. Just outlines the statutes that authorize the control for credit card agreements and allows the board to establish rules and regulations. Obviously, this policy would apply to any Roscommon County employee, elected official, or department head who receives funding through the county as a funding unit, unless there's a statute out there someplace that says it doesn't. And then, we will look at that statute and act accordingly. Responsibilities for the credit card, currently, one of the things that I wanted to add in, because this, like I said, we didn't really have a policy, it was just something saying, okay, we can adopt a credit card. It just states that credit card agreements and any credit level limit increases post-stating the adoption of this policy, because obviously, the other things are already in place and operating, shall require approval by the Board of Commissioners. So, at that point in time, if somebody comes in and they're like, well, I really like Home Depot, but I think we should open a lowest line of credit, that would come before, I would bring that before the Board of Commissioners for approval. The other sections of this are just simply that I'm going to be the one that's responsible on a day-to-day basis for this, based on the statutes and the policies, or me, because I'm currently an administrative controller, but the administrative controller position. But you've got to make sure everybody, including that position, follows federal, state, and Board of Commissioners statutes and policies, and to make sure that it is monitored and complied with on a regular basis. The other portion of that is, any elected official or department head that actually has been issued or will be issued a county-sponsored credit card has to be responsible for complying with all of the same and above. They have to make sure that it is protected and that the custody of the cards and documents are all taken care of. General responsibilities follow, just like anybody else when they have a credit card, you've got to make sure you keep the receipts, you've got to make sure that the expenditures are lawful and in compliance with guidelines. You can't go out and use the county credit card to buy lawn furniture for your house type of a thing. Issued cardholders will make sure that those purchases actually are budgeted. So, you're going to use your credit card, but do you have, do you have budgeted funds that can pay that credit card back off? If you leave, then you have to turn the credit card in. You have to surrender it, that's simple. Authorized credit use, obviously, it's got to be for county purchases of goods and services, unofficial county business. If it's a purchase that's determined unlawful per the State of Michigan Department of Treasury, it's not authorized. They can't exceed the total available balance of the issued credit card. Credit cards can't be used to supersede the purchasing policy or accounts payable policies. And then, obviously, the final one comes directly from MCL 129.24, which states that the, there's a set limit that every county can. Ours would be not to exceed 1% of the total general fund budget for the fiscal year. I will tell you, statute allows for 5%, but that, to me, seems a bit excessive. I think 110,000 is just fine. We don't want to have all of our money caught up in credit card bills, because if somebody loses a receipt and we can't track it down, then you're going to incur a finance charge, and nobody wants a finance charge on tax dollar. For the most part, our department heads and our elected officials that have credit cards, they are extremely good about getting everything in, everything organized, and everything in time. They coordinate very well. There is a credit card under my name that is locked up for most of the general side and the court side. I do have one court that has their own credit card, but they often have needs above and beyond the other courts. They have a very small limit and honestly do better than anybody else as far as turning in, turning in payments for that as well, so. But it's following that same accounts payable policy as far as getting that paid off. Pay off your balance, so you don't have any finance charges. That's the other portion of that. The great news about credit card, having a credit card policy, is you simply, for compliance, follow the statutes. So, the statute basically says that, you know, hey, you could lose your credit card if you use it in a manner contrary to the policy. Additionally, there's a whole bunch of sections in the Michigan Penal Code that say these are all punishable crimes for mismanagement of funds, misuse, if you were to steal a credit card, so those are all in there as well. That's all.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The old policy tied this to entities. This new one removed the wording of tying the credit cards to specific entities, is that correct?
That is correct. Yep, and if you approve it, we do have to approve it through, I do have to have you approve it through a resolution, and that resolution will also include a generic, the approval for any new accounts would come, or changes to accounts would have to come before the board. So, that, to me, is where those specifics would come into play.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, I'll be honest, I hadn't had a chance to read it all. We didn't get the board packet early, and so it is, I haven't read thoroughly. So, it sounds good that we do have departments that work very hard at managing their budgets well. I do believe that. So, the question to me is, let's say, do we ever run into a situation where the credit card payment's not been made, and so their credit limit is declined when they're trying to go somewhere, go to an event, or use it? Where does that breakdown happen? And what are we doing to make sure that that doesn't happen for them?
So, there's a couple different things, and what I will tell you is, that comes down to a department management issue. If you have a $10,000 credit limit, and you have purchased a $7,000 piece of equipment on your credit card, but you know that you have four conferences coming up, it is your responsibility to get that slip in, you don't have to wait for the statement to come to make a payment. My district court, actually, the minute they incur an expense, they submit it for payment to the credit card company. So, the minute they make an expense, they make a payment. So, that's where the breakdown traditionally has come in, is there's no communication in a department between how much credit limit is actually left available and what still needs to be charged on it. We do have the ability, through coordination with myself and the treasurer, to do a payment online for that as well, if they ever find themselves in that. But I will tell you, early on in my years, Sheriff was in Arizona for an FBI training, and his credit card got declined from a very similar situation. So, it's just kind of that overall monitoring on a monthly basis of who's spending what.
So, it is the department head who has the credit card for their department?
Yes.
Who's paying the bill?
Yes.
Or does that bill come to your department to pay the bills?
So, each credit card, each credit card holder gets their own statement sent to their department. So, then, they would take it just like a regular accounts payable bill and code it. They have to put, obviously, any of the proof of purchase on there, which has to have what it is, who it's from, the date of the purchase. So, then, they would turn that in for payment to us.
So, they're sending a statement for you guys to cut the check?
Correct.
They're not getting ahead of it and paying that invoice when they know they've got a balance left?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That helps me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Number three, 2024 year-end budget transfers. Our controller, Jody Valentino.
At the last meeting, I had discussed with you that as we finish off this accrual process, what ends up happening is we have some monies that are receded to us, so we would have some accounts receivable that come in that would be credited back to 2024, just as we have some payables that get credited back to 2024. Occasionally, there is a negative balance that occurs when we do these things. I have two departments in particular that, actually, two funds, I'm sorry, in particular that are in this situation this year. The first one is the Channel Court Fund. I lost Chase, so. And that one is in arrears by about $786. That being said, that arrears is due solely to the payments that are made out for the management of it. And then, we didn't, in that switch with drain commissioners from December to January, nobody asked to move money from point A to point B for me, so now I have to come before you and ask for a formal transfer of $1,000. I never transfer the exact amount, just in case I miss something. I learned that from my first, first year doing this, that sometimes that still puts you a negative, then you have to write a claim to the State of Michigan. So, I do have a motion that I ask to be included, authorizing me to transfer $1,000 from Fund 802, which is the revolving drain fund, which is money set aside for the drain commissioner, to Fund 805, Special Assessment Channel Court, to offset that negative balance. And then, I would need to make that transfer.
that are in this situation this year. The first one is the Channel Court. I lost Chase. So, and that one is in arrears by about $786. That being said, that arrears is due solely to the payments that are made out for the management of it. And then we didn't, in that switch with Drain Commissioners from December to January, nobody asked to move money from point A to point B for me. So now I have to come before you and ask for a formal transfer of $1,000. I never transfer the exact amount, just in case I miss something. I learned that from my first, first year doing this, that sometimes that still puts you a negative, then you have to write a plan to the State of Michigan. So I do have a motion that I ask to be included, authorizing me to transfer $1,000 from Fund 802, which is the revolving drain fund, which is money set aside for the Drain Commissioner, to Fund 805, Specialty Assessment Channel Court, to offset that negative balance. And then I would need to make that transfer back from December 31st, 2024. This will bring the balance sheet into flow, and also brings the cash balance, which is where I give Marcy heart attacks, into a positive as well. The other one is a larger chunk of money, and when I say large, 31,000. We have the Specialty Court. The Specialty Court is funded fully through federal and state grant. When it started five, six years ago, and it was approved by the Board of Commissioners then to bring online, it is wholly funded by the grants. If at any point in time, the grant ceases to exist, then either Specialty Court ceased to exist, or they have to find additional court funding. The problem is this is a reimbursement account. Again, we had a transition from Person A, who was getting all the reporting in, knew exactly what they were doing, that had run it this whole entire time, to a new person who was put in position that didn't know, didn't quite know the timetables yet. So we are looking at a negative of about 29,000 and some change. I'm asking for 31,000 because they did have about 8,000 in accrued accounts payable, and sometimes I miss one or two, and I would hate for it to be in the negative. So with that being said, the motion that I had asked to be placed on would authorize that transfer of 31,000 from the contingency line item and place that into Fund 218, the Specialty Court, to offset that negative cash balance and balance sheet. However, the caveat on there is that the general funds transferred will be reimbursed the minute that the Specialty Court grant reimbursement comes back. Specifically, it was the quarter, October 1 through December 31st, 2024. It has been submitted for, we will get it back. We just don't have it in time for our audit.
Any questions?
That's just. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I made mention to the Drain Commissioner that perhaps there needs to be an assessment put on Channel Court for maintenance money, which is allowed by law. It used to be like $5,500 per mile or fraction of, and he thinks it's now at $10,000. It would be up to him to decide how much of assessment he wants to put on it. It's a simple matter. But if, if that needs to be done, then someone needs to speak to him.
I would love to speak with him.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, can you explain, I'm, I'm new to that area and what you're talking about. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Okay. All drain districts, you're allowed to put an assessment on them. Should it fall, I think it was 2,500 below that in the, in their, with monies left over for maintenance, you can put an assessment. When I was Drain Commissioner, it was $5,500 per mile or fraction of. So if it's a mile and a half, it was like $11,000. You could assess to the drain district, and then you have money to work with. You don't have to assess the total amount. You can determine how much you want to assess, but it's a relatively simple thing. It just goes and has assessors put that on their tax bills. I mean, there's no data review or anything on it to do that.
So it's basically an additional.
It's a way to keep maintenance money there.
Okay. So it's an additional tax to the people in that area? Is that what you're saying? On their taxes?
Special assessments are not taxed because you cannot claim them on your tax forms.
All right.
Correct.
Right now, if something were to break, the Drain Commissioner would need to either utilize the, well, now it'll be 29,000 that's available and do an arrears assessment, or come to the board and ask for money from the general fund to be repaid.
This would be above and beyond what's already in the, in our budget for the Drain Commissioner to do their job? Okay.
Yeah. This way, we don't have to transfer money from one account to the other if the money was there just to be, you know, right now, it was just apparently maintenance of collecting and stuff, you know, paperwork and stuff. But should something happen to come up, like I think, I think even on this drain, the previous Drain Commissioner had someone go out and clean out the outlet to the lake. You know, should things like that crop up, there's money available instead of, you know, because chances are people are going to flood if you don't do something. That's why it's set up that way.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. No other questions and comments. This meeting will be adjourned, and our next one will start at 10:45. Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, April 23rd, 2025, at 10:47 a.m.
The allegiance to the light of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Wolfson. Milburn.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Morley.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Censor. Yes. Morley.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn. Approval of the consent agenda. Before approving and reading what's in there, there were a couple additions that I found in the meeting minutes. One was on April 9th, 2025, under unfinished business. It should also include that Commissioner Censor suggested reinstating the Budget and Finance Committee, and Commissioner Russo said that he would happy to be, to sit on that as well. And then under the lake level control, under new business, it should also include Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Censor, and the Administrator/Controller Valentino to draft the letter. So we have those meeting minutes with that, those corrections, correspondence A through F, which is the MAC legislative updates, letters to the Board of Commissioners regarding Houghton Lake, the reminder about the RTA meeting, and information from NMSKA, and no monthly department reports, Administrator/Controller report, and County Clerk Register of Deeds. Nope. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment for agenda items? Come on up.
Craig Cotterman, Houghton Lake. Minutes to the meeting. Can I comment on the minutes of the meeting? It said the 10-year flood in the minutes, 3.5 inches in a 24-hour period. I chatted with Chase, and he said maybe a 48-hour rain event. Again, there's quite a bit of data. Here's National Weather Service. It shows the precipitation here at Houghton Lake. As normal precipitation, and it's got what it's doing today or yesterday, it's got January, February, March on this graph is what I put in. It says drought is predicted to end soon at Houghton Lake. So I guess that's why we got some water in the lake. Again, it was dubbed a 10-year flood, and we had a 48-inch, or a 48-hour rain event, and sad was close. I didn't think it was that much. He has his lake level gauges, and the charts give you the rain amount on, on his readouts on his webpage. And those readouts were less than what the National Weather Service provided. So again, like he said, 3.5 inches in 48 hours, that's pretty, pretty close. It shows it here on this chart. It's, it's great data. Again, at, at the start of the rain, the lake level was, let's see, 1.44 inches over legal level. And a couple of weeks later, after the rain event, we're 10.61 inches. Oh, excuse me. We had 5.26 inches of rain, and after the rain event, a couple of weeks later, it was, we had 10.6 inches of rainfall. Again, we have a lake level. This is a chart of April 15th to April 25th, and our mean lake level is 8.9. This is what the average is. It would be, be hard to have a 10-year rain event when we're still, when the lake level is still lower than the average. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on agenda items? Any visitors? Unfinished business. Boardroom acoustics.
I don't know, there's an acoustics guy back there, an anti.
Come on up, Andy.
All right. So recently in the past, there's been a lot of complaints about the acoustics in this room. This room isn't set up very well for what we're using it now. Just the size of the room, height of the ceiling, all that doesn't make it very good for these types of meetings. For example, there've been some complaints of what people have called echo. They're hearing an echo while the participants are in the room. They're hearing an echo. Let's see. So right now, if I show a hand, participants in the room, who are, who is currently hearing an echo from me? Okay. Anybody else? I didn't look. All right. What you're hearing is not an echo. What you're hearing is a delay. So you're hearing my voice coming directly from me, and then roughly half a second later, you're hearing me again through the speakers in the ceiling slightly behind you. Now, this room is too small to accommodate that. And if we were to remove those speakers back there, so you would only hear the, my voice live, then there's a good chance that if there's people sitting in the back, they might not hear Mark when he speaks, or they might not hear Rex, or they might not hear Darlene. That's why we have the speakers set up back there. Now, in other places like churches and auditoriums and such, typically, the audience is further away from the speaker. Okay? Because I can just turn around right here, and I can talk normally, and everybody hears me just fine. If I was in an auditorium or church, and I were to try to do this, nobody in the audience would hardly be able to hear me. Speakers and amplifiers and things like that. So it's not really an echo problem. It's a technology problem, and there's no way to get around the delay. So it's pretty much, we're doing what the best we can. For example, Commissioner Morley over there, she tends to project very well when she speaks, to the point where, has anybody had any, any echo issues with her this morning so far? That's because we turned her off from coming from the speakers. Has anybody had any problems hearing her? That's because she is 10 feet away. That is the, that's what's going on. The only way to correct that would be to either move this to an auditorium, or, you know, deal with it with the best we can. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
No, I'll just, Madam Chair, I'll just comment because I did talk to Andy about it, and knowing that I do speak pretty loud at times, that trying to minimize that as well, but knowing that they can turn that off back there is helpful because without this being on, we aren't recorded. So this is important for us to keep, if I understand correctly?
That is correct. Without the microphones, none of the audio would be recorded.
For our YouTube channel. So that's important, just knowing, is there a way, is there any relocation, or at this point, just to monitor, knowing what we have? What's your?
We could try to push the sides back. Commissioner Morley or Clerk Stevenson isn't as close to the audience. It might help it some.
About the way we were set up before, right there with the audience behind us.
Speakers were not placed in the best spot. You want the speakers to be right above your audience, if not slightly in front of, facing the audience.
And that's my next question. A lot of townships will have two speakers up front that broadcast out. Better off doing something like that.
Would that solve anything, in your opinion? Help? That's something that could possibly be looked at.
In our church, we moved the speakers so that they were right in the center, so that everybody got it at the same time. When you put the speakers wide like that or behind, we hear your voice before we hear the speakers, which caused some of the problem you're talking about. That's what we did at our church, is we moved the speakers right over the center so that the audience gets the sound from both speakers at the same time.
Okay. So I think if I'm hearing you correctly, it's not an echo, it is a delay.
Correct.
That this is, this is important. We must keep this so that we're recorded, possibly look at moving these two out a bit, if that helps. But if you can just, I say mute me for the lack of better words. If you turn my speaker off, is that basically solving our problem without going through more speakers? I don't know.
It seems to be. According to the audience anyways, they haven't, from what I asked them earlier, they're be able, they're hearing you just fine without.
How about, are they hearing Rex?
Are they hearing Mark and Rex? No. So the additional two speakers may help with that.
I was going to say, part of the issue too is, look where Mark is, and if Mark speaks right now, look where his.
Yes. I don't, I, I'm, it's unread, so. So I think that that situation, for those who might speak less loud than me, I get that I'm there, that it's more of a use issue, because if they're going to speak softly, whether they sit here or there, might not make a difference. I don't know. I'm not a techie person. So sitting, does that change the fact that using this properly and speaking would help people hear them?
All of the above.
All of the above. Okay. Because we can take ownership on ourselves of what we can do better using this.
Yep.
If, if that's helped solve it. That's, I'm just trying to figure out, do we need to go further and dig further, or can we make some adjustments now that benefit the people to where they're not hearing that delay?
Jeez, more training.
No, I heard you just fine.
Yes.
Without belaboring the point, I think when we sat up this way in horseshoe with the door open like that, some of the echo would, would, the delay would go out in the hall. I think it was a better setup, the old way than the new way. Just my personal thought.
Andy, can you, do you recall if that setup was better?
By old, old way?
Yeah.
Do you mean?
Seems like we never had people telling us they couldn't hear us or echo or anything.
For my time here.
I was gonna say that predated Andy.
Yeah, that was for my time.
But now with the speakers, the way that they are, that's why it doesn't work. Those speakers.
Which is different to what it used to be.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that speaker's has always been there. Am I correct?
I believe in the configuration that Mark's talking about, the speakers were actually over here.
Okay.
The speakers were.
But then because, I believe because of COVID and the, everybody has to be farther away from each other, he turned everything 90 degrees, you know, spread everything out, and then they moved the speakers to be back over, above the audience. And moving, moving those speakers, that's not an easy task.
So Andy, we, we did try this one other time, not too long ago, with those speakers there, and I remember, not to pick on you, Herb, you were on this side of the audience room, and you still heard that, what I would call a delay. So.
It wasn't good.
It still didn't work with that setup. So we still had some same feedback, at least since I've been here. So, it sounds like we either move us a little bit back, or is it just muting someone like me, and then them using their microphones better?
Yes. All the above, again.
We can try that, yeah. I mean, that's what our goal was, to try to figure out what we can do for acoustics, and you've checked on it.
Yeah, the farther away you can be from the audience, the better it is to use the overhead speakers.
We can even move our table back some.
Yep. And even maybe be a little bit longer, like we were. It was far away from each other to have dialogue, but if it helps with the communication.
Better, I could even try to put a couple of speakers, I'll roll and see if that works.
See if it works.
Mm-hmm.
Trial run.
Trial and error.
Okay. Okay. Right. So we'll move us a little bit further back, continue to mute me, right? And work with those, you two using your microphones, and checking out a couple of speakers.
Yep.
Let's try that for the next meeting. I think it's great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bead, Northern Michigan Child Assessment Center deed assignment progress. Jody Valentino.
So not a lot to report yet. It appears that, the rumor is, there was actually a survey done when the deed handed over. I can't find it on record at the township, nor locally here, so I am reaching out to the two, I've reached out to the two surveyors that would have been in operation, to see if that's something that they have on record. Ideally, they will. If they do not, then that would be the best case scenario for us, to do anything with that building, to actually survey that property in question, to make sure that we are leasing a full portion of the building, and we aren't cutting off a little bit of the area that we're saying we're going to give away for a dollar, or sell for a dollar. So that'll be the next thing. So as soon as I know, I will let you know.
Great.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The deed was not, or the survey was not recorded then, if there was one?
No, that was 47 years ago, and I, there wasn't as good record-keeping as there is now.
They weren't required to be recorded at that time. They are now required to be recorded.
Thank you.
Yeah, but you could request it to be recorded.
It was not recorded at that time.
New business? We have none, so we are on to motions and resolutions, whenever our clerk is ready.
Motion number one. Move to approve the Roscommon County Budget Management Policy effective April 23, 2025. See attached.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number two. Move to authorize Administrator Controller Valentino to transfer $15,000 from the General Fund fund balance to the Materials Management Planning Fund to cover current costs of planning. Transferred funds shall be returned to the General Fund upon reimbursement from the State of Michigan Materials Management Plan Grant.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Censor.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number three. Move to authorize Administrator Controller to transfer $31,000 from the General Fund Contingency Line Item to Fund 218 Specialty Court to offset negative cash balance as of December 31, 2024. General funds transferred shall be reimbursed upon receipt of Specialty Court Grant reimbursement for period of October 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just a quick question. I know we talked about these in the work session, and it might have been, one of our commissioners mentioned that we follow the process of, we have it in a work session, then it's gonna go on another meeting. I'm okay with approving them now, but were we supposed to, after we heard about it, wait and put it on another?
It was due to the audit.
Got it.
Good.
Time sensitive.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome. Roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number four. Move to authorize Administrator Controller Valentino to transfer $1,000 from Fund 802 Revolving Drain Fund to Fund 805 Special Assessment Channel Court to offset negative cash balance as of December 31, 2024.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Censor.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number five. Move to authorize Chair Darlene Censor, Director of Equalization Jamie Hauserman, and County Clerk Michelle M. Stevenson to sign the statements of acreage and valuations, L4024s, as equalized by the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners and County Board of Commissioners' Assessment Role Certifications, L4037/2691 countywide totals and individually for each
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number five. Move to adopt the resolution number 2025-04-04, adoption of acreage and valuations as equalized by the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners. Adoption of acreage and valuations as equalized by the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners. Whereas the Honorable Members of the Board of Commissioners, County of Roscommon, Michigan, hereby certify that the assessment roles of the townships and village have been examined, and we find the roles relatively equal as equalized. Therefore, be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners hereby recommends that the valuations be equalized on taxable property by class in Roscommon County for the year 2025, in compliance with Sections 209.5 and 211.34, MCL of 1948, as amended, and in accordance with the equalization certificates.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried. A resolution adopted, excuse me. Number seven. Move to adopt resolution number 2025-04-05, proclaiming the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week as May 4 through May 10, 2025. Proclaiming the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week as May 4 through 10, 2025. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state provincial, their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most important that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners do recognize the week of May 4 through May 10, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Morley.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Thank you.
Committee reports. Commissioner Morley, would you like to start?
Get my paperwork here. On Thursday, April 10, the chamber had a meeting where our victim services unit was there to do a presentation, so I was there to support them. And they, this group learned an awful lot about what those services provide, and heard some of the stories, which I thought was pretty, pretty awesome. On Friday, April 11, the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Committee that I serve on met all day to start reviewing all the policies within that organization. On Monday, April 14, the Village Council had a meeting. I will bring up a thought, because I find it good, that they also, after their pledge, have an invocation at that meeting, which I have not seen in many other of our local, you know, municipalities. The Hiawatha Project is gonna have the Veterans Affairs Group there when that project is complete, they're already working on that. They did a resolution to support local control versus Public Act 233, where, about solar projects and things like that. Red Rock is the developer that is scheduled to do 60 units of housing, mixed-use housing, not just into single-family homes. So they're also using that Mishta grant that was brought up at our last meeting to help with some of the infrastructure. Although Red Rock doesn't need that money, it would just help offset the cost of some of those homes if they get that grant. So they are working through that. Let's see. Thursday, April 17, was the Roscommon Township Association meeting at the village. Both Rex and I were there, and then Chase was there doing his presentation, which I thought seemed to get some good. I'll let you share more on that, because I know that, I had to leave early, so there was more information you can probably share with them. And they did have a good presentation on the non-medical transportation from our Transportation Authority, and many of the people in the room had no idea that that was an available service. So I thought that was good. After that, same day, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board meeting, they're in Traverse City, they are doing budget cuts anywhere between $3 and $8 million in the next year. Lot of changes going on there, along with a CEO search. So those are the two big topics. Monday, April 21, the Downtown Development Authority meeting was there. Marcy did a great presentation about our farmer's market that opens on May 17, for everyone to put on their calendars, and talking a little bit about the social district that they have established that will be opening on May 10. After that, the Central Michigan District Health Department had a ribbon-cutting for one of their school-based health clinics in Shepherd, so we went and attended that to kind of see what that facility looked like. And it is differently run by the Health Department versus one of the hospitals. So, those are my committees. Thank you.
Commissioner Milburn.
Hey, you've been out of the country, and appreciate you getting back. Kim and I have District Health this afternoon at 4 o'clock, and EDC cancels for tomorrow. Thank you.
Commissioner Russo.
I had the agenda meeting on Thursday, April 17. I also attended the Houghton Lake Improvement Board meeting that evening. They will be participating in the Business Expo today at the Northern Center, between 4 and 7, is open to the public. We had discussion regarding Houghton Lake, and surveying will begin the beginning of May. We've been also trying to set up some informal meetings with department heads, and continue to work with Commissioner Morley on the strategic plan, and several conversations with different residents on Higgins Lake.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Yes, I attended the Roscommon Township Association meeting also, and I'd like to expand on Kim's comment about the Transportation Authority. They will transport any Roscommon resident to their doctor's office visits, and I believe even out-of-town visits, for free, as long as it's not a medical emergency. In other words, no assistance needed for medical-wise on the transport, which is, it's really a good program. Also, in the RTA meeting, it was mentioned that pretty much the solar projects are dead because of the federal funding cuts to them. So that may be of no concern to us anymore. And then also, I have a Materials Management Planning meeting at 1 o'clock today to go over some issues with that.
Madam Chair, just to add to Commissioner Wolfson, as far as the transportation, I think there's a small fee, if you're going somewhere, but I mean, like $10. But it's in with your part, like whoever needs to take you and go with you for help, that person as well. So I thought, and I don't.
Yeah, they're transporting people to Saginaw and stuff, you know, for like 30 bucks.
It's incredibly great service, I think. And as far as the solar projects, those are not necessarily dried up, it is just that that law still exists, and from what I'm hearing from our legislators, they're not dried up, and they're not gonna not happen, it's just it's slowing down some of the groups to pursue faster, but.
The townships feel it's dried up. That's what they announced.
Ah, yeah. So, just another, another piece of the communication around what you hear from Lansing versus the others, so, yeah.
Board comment. I'm gonna actually start this one. There were some FOIA requests in regards to Higgins Lake and the current permit that has been applied for. I have given our FOIA director all information that I had, and along with the other board members. That being said, I did reach out to a couple of the Higgins Lake residents to give them personal updates. During one of my conversations, I ended the call abruptly, due to the threats that were being made towards myself, the board, and the county. I will not engage in any conversations where I feel threatened. I will not tolerate that type of behavior from anyone. We are doing everything that we possibly can to find a solution to being able to maintain the legal level on Higgins Lake. And instead of working with us, some choose to use threats, bullying, and lawsuits when things don't move fast enough or go their way. Again, these are putting up roadblocks. What do roadblocks accomplish? The exact opposite of what they are trying to achieve. I think some have forgotten what it is that they've been asking the board to do. Instead, they're more focused on winning than what they actually have stated they're looking to accomplish. If you want the legal level on Higgins Lake to be maintained, then maybe they should try working with us, and instead of against us at every turn. Commissioner Wolfson. Commissioner Russo.
Thank you.
I applaud your comment, and support it whole, completely.
Commissioner Morley.
You probably left me for last, since I probably will have something to say. I have a couple of follow-ups, just to make sure that I keep track of some things. I know that our controller's setting up some meetings with three of our department heads. Is there, I haven't heard any definitive date, time, do we know yet?
I don't have the times, but May 2 is good for two.
Okay.
The prosecutor's office, I am having to get back with him, because they are pretty busy in the next few weeks, so lots of criminals.
So we'll have some times set, pretty, so I can carve it out?
Yes.
Okay, great. And is there, there was a request from the Health Department about some GIS data, and I don't know if they've, what's the outcome? Are they getting it?
The last, yep, the last communication that I had was, I had reached out to the director and asked him, I think I copied you and maybe.
Yes, I got that one.
Okay. To verify what information was needed and to respond back to me. He has not replied to my email. There was a follow-up email from the, if I understand correctly, who is talking to whom, there is a guy in an office in one city. there is a guy in an office in one city requesting information from our GIS specialist, but he is talking to IT people down here, so it's going three-pronged. But I have not heard from Steve Hall yet. So I am looking for that clarification of what they need.
Before, I understand completely.
Before I can give a kind of an answer.
I kind of felt even the brief conversation with Steve Hall at the Shepherd event that if I'm not mistaken, there's somebody else named Steve that works with him that's supposed to contact you.
Yes.
When we hear from them, we can address it. Cool. Before each of you, I did put a copy of our strategic plan, or these are the goals. We've had it for, geez, several months now. And I think our Chair gave us an opportunity to add more, delete, change, put what we think we might do, and I, we haven't heard any more. So the piece before you is what I would really like to say before we leave today. Are we good with this? Because we are now in, going into the month of May. And there's been, as you can see, I've marked out things that weren't able to accomplish because we haven't done it yet. So if you look at the month of May, well, let's go to April, if you don't mind, just giving me a moment to make sure you're okay with this. In April, to finalize this action plan and then to review the options for acoustics in the meeting room, we're on target for that. So that would make sense. We completed the public meeting for Houghton Lake. That's been done. But if you go into May, there is a, an action item to create meeting rules that we can hand out so that the public, when they come to meetings, understand Open Meeting Act, what we do, how do you get public feedback, how do you get comments? So it is a true draft. I am not a designer. So I would really like to have this ready as we move into the month of May. So we have some basics on Open Meetings Act, public comment rules, and how do we do board responses? So if, if you're not coming to a Zoom meeting and you see the meeting, then how do you get your public feedback or your public comment back out to the public? So I don't know if these are right or wrong. I just think we need to get those cleared up so it's very clear for our public. Maybe even what's the difference in FOIA versus just an email request? Because I think that gets some communication misled, like I don't, maybe I have to FOIA you to get an answer, which I don't believe that's true. So that is one of the pieces we'd like to get done. And then to make sure that we review these goals, I did put, you know, our Chair to do that at our meetings as we agree to these, where we add on the action plan. Meeting with our department heads is another piece that we've been discussing to make sure that we continue to build this trust and communication back and forth. I think that's in the works. Then an annual review and prepare our goals and priorities for our Controller. We've had this discussion that that has been something that's lacked over the last past commissioning groups. So let's get that review done and let's start putting some goals and, you know, expectations for her so that she can manage her department well. And those were key things. This lake-level management report, I think, is in the works. And then under our advocate for social, being an advocate for social issues is really around our support for the Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center. I think that's ongoing. And then as you go down, if we can at least agree that this is where we're going to spend time and energy above and beyond your other statutory duties, we need to work through this in May. So you can think about June, July, and the rest that I put in here. But I think if that's the case, then I'm, I'm asking for either support or some changes.
So if all of you guys can take a look at this and know later than, let's say, next week, Wednesday, get any additions or acceptance, and then we will put this on the May meeting to adopt it and start working forward. It's a document. It's going to be ongoing. We're going to fill in June, July, August, and as we go through. But at least then we have a outline to start.
Both of those documents, that'd be helpful. I also did go over our guiding principles, so I gave each of you a little sleeve to keep in our binders as well as a reminder of how we conduct ourselves as, as board members. Other than that, I would agree, Chairman, that it's kind of been disappointing that there's a few who really believe that it's better to prove that they're just right. It's, it's not about working together to come to making change. And I don't know about you guys, but that is why I ran, not to prove I'm right, but to move this county forward. And those distractions, and it slows us up. And not having a good goals and action plan to keep laser-focused on moving forward makes that harder. That's one of the reasons we're working on that. It's created so much noise, and it's just a few that believe that only their thought is the right thought. And that is not how you legislate. It is about listening, hearing them all, and, and trying to come up with the best solution for the whole moving forward. So I am willing to work with anyone who can respectfully have discussion, have conversation, debate, but not come forward and be bombastic and be disrespectful. That will tune people out of the noise, and it doesn't help us move forward. It's not fair to the rest of the people in this county. So thank you for your initial comments as well, and I will continue to stay focused on those who really want to, to work on a solution. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Amanda?
I don't want to go first all the time because I'm sure everyone else. I always like what you have to say, Kim, or Commissioner Morley. I can hear you perfectly well. Craig Cotterman, Houghton Lake, my green light's on. Again, I could hear much better this meeting, same way the last time. Matter of fact, I had my hearing aids. I was going to put them on because without the echo, I thought they might actually work. The meeting has been enjoyable for me. I can hear you. Rex, I could hear you. Mark, yes, so. Again, I don't know, headphones for the hearing impaired, is that, I don't think they cost that much. When I watch TV, I got headphones, and you don't even need a wire, you know, the, the RUCO has got a, I don't know, a signal in it. Okay, I asked Commissioner Morley, Morley, I guess I can find that right, if I could send her some pictures of flooding at Houghton Lake on her cell phone, and she said, go ahead. I sent some Darlene. Been sending the, the pictures of flooding in my front yard as well to Chase. If anybody wants some pictures that I've been taking, I won't send them to you unless I would ask first. I think a person's phone should be, I know that's your private line probably, and same way with Darlene. I get stuff sent on my private line all the time. Operations Manual Craft, I asked Commissioner Censor for a copy of that. She said I could get one. Guess it's not, it's not private. Operations Public Comment on, I guess we would send a public comment about the Operations Manual to Chase, what I understand. Again, I, I think the Operations Manual is a backdoor approach to water banking. I believe you're looking to plan for a drought, but you don't have the means to get rid of the water when we have a flood. Again, the flooding that's going on right now, we're actually, we're actually below normal. Our, our mean, our, our mean for Houghton Lake, 45 years of water statistics under the USGS, the mean level was 8.91. 0.8 times one, about 10 inches is where we're usually at, and we're about 8, 9 today. So even though we're experiencing flooding, when you look at the statistical data of 45 years, we're still below the average for this time of year. It went from April 15th to April 25th. Got a copy of it here if you want. I don't know. Commissioner Morley, there's also a, a human rights issue involved in some of these things. We're all working for the mutual best interests of our community. And the management of the ecosystem in Houghton Lake is pretty complex. That volumes of data, wild rice, we need a legal lake level to restore the wild rice. We need a legal lake level to restore the shoreline. We need a legal lake level to save our lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? With no further public comment, this meeting will be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next meeting will start at 11:45. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just. Roll call, please. Milburn.
Here.
Here. Russo.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
What are we looking at?
Approval of the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Wolfson. Motion carried. Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment for agenda items? New business, Roscommon County, 2025 budget review as of March 31st, 2025.
Like that? Okay, better. All right. So this is as of March 31st, which gives us then all of those accounts, payables, payrolls, and revenues that come in. Marcy does a lot of work in her office with bringing in the electronic revenues that come back in. And then the process for that, just so you know, is they come in, Marcy gets them, and then she brings them into the general ledger, which is how we get those revenues that come in there. So this will include everything up to date as of 3:31. So as of right now, we are 24.66% complete with our fiscal budget year. All of our millages excluding the Ad Valorem, which is our general millage that comes in, are winter taxes. Therefore, those have been fully collected, made whole by the county for anything that was under. Our healthcare spending accounts, and I'll, I'll continue to hammer this until probably the end of the summer, the healthcare spending accounts were 100% funded in January. So that's included in the overall expenditures, and that amount is included in your healthcare expenses as well. So when you see a slightly higher, that's the biggest part to keep in mind for that. 2024 healthcare reimbursement account expenditures do continue to process for claims made in December. So therefore, I mean, and technically, we could probably get one that- For July. So we will continue to receive those HRAs under our old plan. So those will continue to, to come, to come through slowly until they finalize out, probably about like the, I would love to say mostly by the middle of the year. Though I know last year we had some from like two years before that hit. So we'll have a spare one. So those show, will actually show up. So if you see an HSA budget amount for a non-union department, because obviously only our union departments have the HSA now, that is why. It's all right. Yeah, I want to understand what you're saying. Okay. So currently, our fund revenues to date, our general fund always shows low at the beginning of the year. Again, remember that, that large chunk of the four or $6 million general Ad Valorem tax does not come to collection until summer. So you will always see that being low. We are right on track compared to last year's collections. County Road Commission, that is a fund that is a collect and give. They're slightly higher than last year. I don't know how that happens, but it's not one we manage. It's just one that the Treasurer's Office has to statutorily collect and give back out. The Special Road Millage Fund, 202, 96.78% to date, that is another winter collection. I will tell you that Clerk Stevenson and myself were informed that they will not be asking for a special election that will be next year, that they will go to renew because they do still collect this winter on that. So they will get their full 2026 from the winter tax bill of 2025. Sheriff Road Patrol is fully, fully funded for their tax, for their millage, but obviously they have other sources of revenue that they collect throughout the year. They're at 87.51%. Animal shelter donations, people like the animal shelter. So they're already up on donations this year by roughly about $5,000 from where they were last year. Animal Control Program, that encompasses both the shelter and our animal control officers. They are also a winter, our winter millage collection. They are at 92.55%. They will have collections that come along with selling of dog licenses and any fines or fees that might come through for violations of the ordinance. Emergency Management, which I clearly spelled wrong, 87.73%. There is still reimbursements for that that come through as our Director attends conferences and we apply for funding reimbursements on a quarterly basis. Friend of the Court, they are at 13.27%. They are still actually waiting for, they bill out monthly for their reimbursement. Their 66.67% reimbursement from the state of Michigan. So they have actually not received January, February, January, February, or March reimbursements yet. So they're, they're low. We have also not transferred any of our allocated funding to them from the general fund yet. Counseling Services, that is a statutory fund where a little bit of money has to get put aside. It is specific to Circuit Court. That is at 12.5%. And that is simply kind of always in a guess. It's right where it was last year, though. Specialty Courts is, as we discussed in the last meeting, is low. They are awaiting reimbursement not only for October, December, November, or, I'm sorry, October, November, December, but they also will be awaiting reimbursement for January, February, March, which was submitted within the last week. Our Opiate Settlement Fund is actually a new fund. We had to take the money out of the 701 Tuition Agency account and put it into a new fund. So this now is just the totality of that money that we have received in settlements to date, which is $756,687.37. There are no expenditures associated with that until such time that the board asks us, decides to move forward with that. Our Landfill, we haven't transferred any money to them, and they don't start up for about another two weeks now. So they currently don't have any revenues in there. Groundfield Redevelopment Authority Fund, they have received interest on some of their investments. The EDC Special Project Funds, they are looking to do some fundraising here. So as of yet, they haven't gotten that quite organized and put into place, so there are not any funds coming in to them. The Automation Fund, which is a Clerk ROD fund-specific, has received 29.36% of their budgeted revenues to date. The MCOL CP training fund will receive money from the state of Michigan, but that has not been processed yet. Indigent Defense, that's another one that we are rating reimbursement from the state of Michigan for. That actually comes in, we just submitted it. So that should actually come in probably mid-April, and then we'll transfer our $215,000 about mid-year for that as well. More funds. Obviously, Central Dispatch is also going to be a summer millage collection. The rest of their funding comes through in the form of like FOIA fees that might be collectible, those types of things. Concealed Pistol Licensing, CPL, is also a Clerk ROD fund. They are currently at 37.91%. We do have corrections- We do have Corrections Training. Corrections Training is another portion where a certain amount of statutory money is put in specific to perform corrections officers' trainings events. They are currently at 16.14%, which is a little low for them this year, which just means we have to keep a close eye on their expenditures to make sure that they don't exceed the fund balance plus revenues. Law Library, we have not transferred. Juvenile Justice has received reimbursements already for their portions of the grant that comes in. County Housing and County Housing Admin Funds, those are all based on programs that were in the past that we collect payments and interest on, plus then the amount of money that is collected in for any deed payoffs or housing payments that people still owe for us. Commission on Aging is another pass-through. They have collected all of their millage money just about, minus maybe a little interest from like 2022 and '23 back taxes. That's another pass-through that the money comes through, they send a request into the Treasurers' Office, and there is a check cut to them for their millage amount. Childcare Fund, they are at 4.95%. Obviously, we will fund about $420,000 of their budget this year, and I have not transferred money to them yet. Spongy Moss Suppression, they have received all of their millage money, so they look really good this year. Veterans Affairs, all of their millage money has been received. Capital Improvements, we didn't budget anything for that, but we did have $68,024.14 transferred over from the interest to go into that account for this year. Our Animal Shelter Projects, that is essentially the money that people leave us when they die for specific projects. People like animals in our county, I'll just put it that way. So essentially, when Didi gets a notification, that's where the money goes that's in there. Good news is, nobody died this year that's left us any money. Airport, the $13,689.08 that they have received to date so far represents 1.41. The $967,582, to remember, will include that big grant project that we will receive funding for, for the taxiways as it sits in there. So the $13,689.08 is simply a combination of small gas sales monies and payments for hangar rent that have come through. Commissary Inmate Trust Account is kind of exactly what it sounds like. So essentially, this is the money that is made off of additional items that are able for purchase. It also includes the revenue from phone services that is utilized in the jail. Give you a little bit of idea of what the commissary looks like. Essentially, there's an online system that they can utilize, or they can put a kite, a note in for an order that allows them to get, you know, extra hot chocolate, extra socks, an additional white towel, or something of that nature. So that actually is almost halfway to what they budgeted. It's actually doing pretty well this year. That being said, the more inmates you have, the more money you get into that account. So we have no money budgeted in for revenues for Higgins Lake, because obviously there is not a special assessment district collection that is going on. The Holton Lake LLC and the Lake St. Helen LLCs, both of those are the collections for the special assessment districts that were on this current tax roll that went through. So 2025 revenues to date, obviously you can see that like the general fund, we're going to be low. Several of the others that come into there are Lake St. Helen's halfway through, but I like pictures. All right. Overall, for the fund expenses to date, of what's been spent per fund, nobody is over budget. The general fund is, I say that, but Brownfield Redevelopment. Nobody is out of line. Everybody is well within the areas that they're trending. Brownfield Redevelopment only budgeted for $1,000 in expenditures. They did have a consultant come in, so they're showing slightly higher than that, but that is a one-time payment for the entirety of the year for that. The EDC Special Projects, they paid in advance the $25,000 that is paid to Michigan Works to have that consultant. So they have paid that upfront for the entirety of the year. So what's remaining is everything they have left to be spent, but they have no more big bills that come into play with that as well. Our Corrections Training Funds, as I mentioned, that one is a little bit higher in their expenses. They have sent new officers to the Corrections Training School, and so that's about a $1,500 expense. And additionally, they've had some trainings that have happened at the beginning of the year. This is one that I just watched to make sure that their combined total revenue that they bring in, along with their fund balance, doesn't exceed. If it, for some reason, that does happen, what we end up doing is I end up doing a journal entry, and that training just goes from correction training back to the jail fund. And we just keep in touch, Lori and I, so she knows when she's getting close, so she quits putting it on payroll for Noel to pay out of. So. The Law Library is currently at 32.71%. We're having a conversation right now in regards to expenses for the Law Library. They just received a new quote, and the new quote for their services increased by $500 a month. Obviously, that is not something that's budgeted. So our prosecutor is working with our judges to kind of have a discussion about what that looks like and where it goes, since obviously there's only a total of about $17,000 left for the year for that. So. Juvenile Justice is well within their expenses. That is simply one person's salary that comes out that performs as a juvenile probation officer as well. Oops, gotta go back one. As you look through the Childcare Fund, which is the one Mark's whispering to me about how we're doing on that at the beginning of everything, their expenditures are actually doing well right now, which we always like to see at the beginning of the year, in case they get busy later on in the year. So they are currently at 9.7% of their total budgeted expenditures. This is one that it just depends on the mix of the children and the use that come into care, and where they're placed, and how much those placements cost. So. Spongy Moss Suppression hasn't really kicked off yet, so there's not a lot there that has kicked over. It has simply been some payroll expenses and some down payments as far as equipment. Veterans Affair, well in line. Capital Improvement, we didn't budget any expenditures out of, because we need about $240,000 to do that. Nothing done in the Special Project so far this year for the animal shelter. The airport bought fuel, which is around $20,000 when they fill up, so they're a little bit higher in their expenses as far as that. Plus, we did have to pay for Prina Newhoff for that $15,000 project that we'll get fully reimbursed for as well. Commissary Inmate, their expenditures are about half of what they've brought in, which is what we like to see as far, so you're getting a good return for your investments on purchases. Year-to-date for Higgins Lake, Holton Lake, and Lake St. Helen, obviously Holton Lake has been by far the largest. That is $100,814.48. That is a combination of attorney's fees, fees for engineering, and fees to our delegated authority. I do try to send those bills out to you guys when they come in to me, so that you can keep an eye on those. And any of the engineering and attorney bills, I do try to work with our delegated authority on, just so he has approval on those to ensure that they are our actual expenses. The Higgins Lake expense is what we have paid to Prina Newhoff to date for the permitting applications as well. So obviously, when you look at how much money we're going to spend all year, you always notice that our general fund, Sheriff Road Patrol Funds, Road Commission, which is another, which is the pass-through fund, those are our largest chunks of expenditures. That's why we always focus so much on the general fund, because that is 75% of everything that we spend money on, in essence, as it works through. But everyone is right where we want them to be for this. Try to summarize this a little bit better, a little bit faster. So these are all of our general fund departments, speaking of being the largest part of what we tend to spend our time on for this. And revenues to date, the primary revenue, which is kind of an important piece for you guys, that's the one that contains the current taxes that we collect. So again, being at 10.6% or only 869, that doesn't include that $6 million. That doesn't include county revenue sharing, it doesn't include cost allocation. So a lot of those larger things that have come in. And actually, it doesn't have swamp tax yet in it either, which is kind of a pass-through as well. So a lot of the larger things have not hit the budget yet for revenues. For the rest of everybody, as far as where we're at for revenues to date, Andy's Department didn't budget for any revenues, but they helped NEMCA, and NEMCA paid us money for it, $53.95 for your time. High five? Good job. So he's at 100% of his revenues. Good job, because you didn't budget for any. County Controller, ours are all FOIA-based collections for that. And if things keep rolling, we certainly will exceed the $1,500 as that comes through. Clerk Register of Deeds, that's another one that until 22.52 is actually, at this point of time of year for that office, is extremely good. They pick up, as everything else picks up, housing, elections, all of those types of things. So you'll see another stream through there. Survey and Remond, they receive an annual reimbursement, that'll be $47,868. The $87.30 they have received is another statutory, we have to give this much money to Survey and Remond, that happens out of the Clerk Register of Deeds office as well. We have, in elections, we did, that $11,000 is essentially the reimbursement money that came in from past elections, that comes in from this year. Depending on when it comes in, depends on whether or not it will get equated back to next year's budget, or to 2024's budget. So that could, it came in right at a time that's going to have to be an auditor's decision for that. So. Buildings and Grounds, they have 50% of their annual revenues. Most of theirs, their $2,000 is resulting in looking for wrap grant applications that we can put forward to MMRMA for safety and security of the building. Soil Erosion is another one. You'll see it kick up here as things are warming up. They are currently at 20.75%. Circuit Court, Family Court. Central Services, District Court Municipal, District Services, and Probate, actually, Probate's a little higher this year. Those are all right at where they normally are at this time of the year. District is another area. As it gets busier in the courts, District gets more money that comes in, because they're collecting fees and fines. The most important thing to remember for our courts as we look at this is the types of cases they get in, the caseloads, what they collect as statutory. So there's no hidden fees, fines, there's no make-believe county fees that go into this. We only collect in our courts what the law says we are allowed to collect. So generally, what's kept an eye on there is if there's a 10% bond amount that we're allowed to retain, is that being retained in all of the departments? If there's a bond forfeiture, are we forfeiting? You know, those types of areas that they come in are where they look. Our Probate Court actually has been a little bit busier so far this year. They're at 44.16%. That's going to be closing estates, anybody that needs an audit of an estate, those type of things that come in. Prosecuting Attorney and Crimes Victim Advocate are both under the purview of Prosecutor Edwards. The 15.48% is typical for this type of year for them. They are also waiting for state grant reimbursements that coincide with what Friend of the Court does. So those are behind us well, three months that we haven't received. Crimes Victim Advocate, I submit for on a monthly basis. So this is actually inclusive of December as well, but we've received December, January, and February so far reimbursements for that department. Administration is actually the sheriff's admin, and a lot of theirs is going to be the drug forfeitures and those types of things that come through. Sting, we do get reimbursement for Sting. But that comes in a quarterly basis through our Treasurers' Office as they oversee the funding for that. Courthouse Security, reimbursement for mental health mileage. Dive Team gets donations, so somebody has already made a donation to our dive team this year. ORV Patrol, 100% grant funded, so when that is submitted for at the end of October by the Sheriff's Department, we will see that funding come in. Corrections and Jail, one of the things that I wanted to note on the Corrections Department or for the jail is none of the march submissions for state or federal billings, like those marches have not come in yet because they were just billed out. So by 3:31, we did not have that information. But this is actually, so far, a pretty good year for them. Medical Examiner, that is just simply when people want an unclaimed body or donate towards unclaimed bodies. So it could happen, or it could not happen. Insurance is the money that Darlene will bring back to me from MMRMA when it comes in, and that's further into the year as well. So. So revenues to date, obviously, look at how good MIS IT looks. I know. I got nothing for you. So that just kind of gives you an idea where we're at revenues to date comparative to what that 100% mark is, and I think paints a little bit of an easier picture of who has millage money and who doesn't as well. But the general fund departments and where they sit to date, obviously, ideally, we want everybody over the 20% mark, but some of us haven't gotten there yet. So. The expenses to date, basically, it follows the same sort of trending as it comes in there. As you go through and you look through, oh, sorry, Andy. MIS is slightly, IT is slightly over budget, but they do a bulk purchase at the beginning of the year for any of the computers that need to be set out. So that'll even out as it comes down through the rest of the year. I'm just trying to see. What else is really over? I mean, it's been a pretty good first quarter, as healthy as it seems. We do have, we are a little bit over in our District Services, but that was simply for the prepayment of the healthcare savings account that everybody has. So keeping that in mind, that as you're looking at all of these apartment expenses to date, that's already been paid out of all of these budgets. So we are not going to see another big lump sum like that of $3,000 per person or $1,500 per person that comes out, that is already included in there. Okay. Wow, that looks really expensive, doesn't it? So really, again, as you're looking at that, you're trying to figure out, has everybody paid for everything that they're in? Now, there's one really long, tall, yellow line that stands out in there. And that department is actually our debt account. And what that is, is that's where any taxes that have to be repaid to an entity based on PRAE status are paid out of. And we had a really large one. And so traditionally, yeah, so traditionally, we budget right around like $2,000 for that. We are already at $13,000 that we have had to reimburse to people this year. So that's just kind of one of those things. So that'll be one of those areas that later on, I'll come back to you in like the middle, and I'll say, hey, I need to do a budget adjustment, money out of contingency to cover this, or money from here to there. So that'll fall under the budget adjustments. Unfortunately, it's kind of hard to predict, Marcy, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Because you don't know who's going to appeal and what they're going to appeal, and...
Yeah. I guess would be... That's in line? Go back?
Oh, okay. Quite expensive. Am vets makes a lot of sense for that, so. Okay. Payroll by Fund to date. Again, everything's looking really healthy. Our departments that tend to have overtime have not yet really hit those overtime months. That starts in about the end of May and will run forward to about November. So you'll see Sheriff Road Patrols, you will see even Animal Control with overtime. You will see 911, Central Dispatch that comes through with that. But as of now, with the exception of Corrections Training, and like I said, that's the money that we pay out to people to attend corrections training specific to, we spend it until the money's gone. So overall, payroll is sitting pretty good. So. I really liked this chart, and I don't know why. I like to throw a different one in. It shows you everything's a little bit more, you'll see Corrections Training spikes up, but everybody else is below that 24% that we're actually looking to achieve. So. Our benefits to date, everybody's a little bit higher, with the exception of the Sheriff Road Patrol, simply because we have paid out all of that HSA. Obviously, as anybody changes their benefits, we budgeted based on what we knew in November to be true of what type of insurance, one person, two person, or family, that somebody would be taking. There was a change in the animal shelter, which is why that looks a little bit higher in there. Plus, you had a reimbursement that came through late. Is DeeDee still in here or am I just talking to myself? Okay, that's good. Okay. So that's why that came out. Overall, you'll see our benefits, we, we pay the most money into our general fund, that's where most of our people are. Then looking at our Sheriff Road Patrol, which is an even half of what we, we, you know, have to purchase as far as employees for the general fund, but everyone's doing pretty well. Our Retirement Funds to date, nothing extraordinary here. This is a little bit easier to budget for because you're budgeting either a percentage based on wages or a fixed amount that was sent to us by MERS for those people that are in a defined benefit. Everybody is right on par for course for this. Same, same things that you noticed, your general fund is that really big orange line, so that'll be the largest chunk of people, therefore the largest chunk of payments that we make into retirement, followed by the Sheriff Road Patrol, that's less than 50%. And that is the end of my slideshow. So Commissioner Wolfson had asked me if there was anything so far out of the ordinary, anything that would be something to be worried about or to be concerned about, and at, and at this point, we don't have anything. That doesn't mean we couldn't have something. Obviously, our Clerk Register of Deeds is going to get me some data on her elections budget. There was some funding put into there, but when somebody throws a special election on, that costs the county money until they can get reimbursed from it. So we'll make that determination, bring a budget adjustment this summer to you for that, knowing that, you know, it won't be huge and we will get reimbursed for it. But what other information can I answer?
Yeah, I don't know. And when they did that, the Amvets, or review, and then the board you agree with the professor and so they... And that, yes, they are... But the issue there was that Mary Brent carved that out, and so there was... Big value on based on the fact that...
And I understand, full disclosure, I'm a life member of the Amvets, but I just, it's good to hear that, but obviously, it's less revenue for the, for the county.
Good report, Jody.
Yeah, it is, it, I'm the newest one, of course, I always have those questions. So help me a little bit, none of the report in my saying is right or wrong, that's not my point. So, because I think the report is good, I love knowing where we're at year-to-date. So it's, on the Opiate Settlement, we, you know, we have under revenues, 756 plus thousand, but we also have under expenses, the same number. I'm just, it sounded like none of that has been spent yet. Is that correct?
It hasn't been.
Okay. Zero. All right. So the Brownfield Redevelopment Group, which is good, they had a, one extra payment, that's why they're over. They didn't really budget to bring in a consultant, is that what I heard? But they did, so they're over. Is that correct?
They budgeted, but it was slightly over what they budgeted for. So Brownfield is, they're really kind of their own...
Was it Brownfield or Economic Development?
That was Brownfield. It was a $1,200 expense. And then...
Yes, that will be...
Is that reimbursable?
It was a consultancy, prior to me, from the Brownfield, they had contracted for some services and it was a bill that they sent for services. They, I know there's some issues there as far as what they're paying for.
So it was slightly more than they budgeted for, so.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'd like to thank the team, I know it's a team effort.
It's a nice report. Thank you, Jody.
And Commissioner Morley, since you are newer, if there's anything that you would like to see added on to, further detail next time, anybody, please let me know, because that, I mean, and that's one of the things going back to looking at a performance review and, you know, here's some goals we'd like you to set. I don't know unless you ask me.
Fair enough.
Just ask.
And I think as I learn more too, it helps me. I mean, it would be hard for me to have said that today, but the more I understand and the more I learn about it, then if I have a thought, I will, you know me, I'll let you know.
Okay. So then we're on to motions and resolutions. We have none. Public comment? No public comment, so all in favor of adjournment, say aye.